Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 23. If you are watching live on Monday, October 23, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is (769) 1677. Our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, November 13, and that will begin with a joint work session, our annual joint meeting with the Pleasantville School District and school board. So, we alternate the locations of that, and this year it is here. So, that will begin at 7:30 p.m. So again, Monday, October and November 13, we start at 7:30 with our joint work session with the Pleasantville School Board, and then we'll pick up with our regular meeting at 8:30. A couple of announcements to make. As some of you who follow our meetings are already aware, we are launching a project to make substantial improvements along the Manville Road streetscape from Grant Street up to Tompkins, a project which is largely funded by a $1.52 million grant we received from New York State. Part of that will also be used to create a new civic space, a park, a plaza, whatever it evolves into, at the western end of Memorial Plaza where the flags and war monuments sit. We are going to be closing the elbow turn that takes you out of the commuter side, and that will create a revised parking and traffic pattern in Memorial Plaza and a new civic space that we anticipate will be a great new civic amenity and a means of improving Memorial Plaza. What that looks like will be the subject of much discussion, and we're going to kick that off in a planning meeting, a community workshop that has been scheduled for November 6 at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. Patty, right?
Right here, yes.
So, we have engaged a great team. Phil Byrick, Pleasantville resident, member of our planning commission, and a distinguished planner in his day job, along with Jamie Maslin Larson of Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architecture, a distinguished landscape architect with a raft of national and international work behind her, are sharing their expertise with us here in Pleasantville, and they will be leading this workshop on November 6 in this room at 7:00? 7:00. We anticipate that the feedback they get on that occasion will allow them to start to put together some preliminary schematic plans, and that we'll be back with a second session to which the community's invited, which at the moment is tentatively scheduled for December 7 at 7:00 p.m. In that case, based on the schedule, it would take place at the Clinton Street Senior Center. That December 7 date is tentative at the moment, and we'll confirm that as the day comes closer, but what is confirmed is that the first community meeting will be on November 6 at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. So, you can look that up on Facebook, maybe you already did. Good chance to have you make your Facebook pitch.
Yes, so we're in the process of getting the word out about the new Village Facebook page. For those of you who haven't yet connected to it, the easiest way to do so is to go to the Village website, and there's a link with the Facebook icon on the upper right-hand side. We have posted some flyers around the Village, and we're encouraging people to spread the word. So by word of mouth, you know, if you have a Facebook page, you can post it on your personal Facebook page as well, because we figure the more people who are part of that network, the more effective it will be.
Great, thank you for that. Couple of other things I wanted to mention. Folks may be aware of a referendum item on this year's ballot, which is a required referendum every, what, 16 years, is it? Regarding the question of whether New York State should hold a constitutional convention, that is a mechanism by which a convention of delegates comes together in Albany and considers changes to the New York State Constitution. So, that is a matter that all of us will have the opportunity to vote yea or nay on, and there are strong feelings on both sides. I just want to encourage everybody who intends to vote this election day to bone up a little bit on the question of the constitutional convention. There is lots to be said about it, and all you have to do is hunt around a little bit, and you'll find vehement and passionate statements, both pro and con. The process of sorting that out, obviously, will be in the eye of the beholder, but I do encourage folks to get connected with that question so that you can vote knowledgeably when you confront that. Anybody else have other announcements to make?
We do on the 25th, which is Wednesday. Pleasantville Strong is partnering with RE/MAX Ace Realty, which is a realtor here in Pleasantville, and they have created together, RE/MAX Gives Back. They are donating a portion of every sale broker's fee of a home in Pleasantville to the Youth to Youth Club that's in the Pleasantville High School. RE/MAX has been a fabulous partner for quite a while now, and so there's a luncheon at RE/MAX, which is at 356 Manville Road this Wednesday from noon to 2:00. We invite everyone who would be interested in coming to join us. And I really want to thank RE/MAX and Nicole Almaguerinos, who is our leader in Pleasantville Strong, who was able to put that together.
Would this be a good time to talk about the Manville Island project?
Yes, thank you.
Go for it.
So, as some of you may have noticed, we have a new traffic island. This was the idea of our superintendent of public works, Jeff E. Conam, on Manville Road at the point where it branches out to Rebecca Avenue. It's a place that was sort of awkwardly wide, and which is now made safer for pedestrians by the addition of the traffic island, which also gives us some extra parking spaces. And we have something exciting in the works for this space, a new kind of municipal garden that will provide three functions: beautification, education, and an ecological benefit as well. So I'm just going to say a couple of words quickly. I'm going to be working with Carolyn Ramsey from the Pleasantville Garden Club, who is a master gardener through the University of Cornell program, to design a garden that's going to be composed primarily of native plants, which is where the ecological component comes in, native plants being a vital part of the food chain for local wildlife and being threatened not only in our own gardens where it's become, they've become less common, but even in spaces that we think of as natural or local parks and preserves for a myriad of reasons, including the impact of foreign invasive plants. So, the good news, as I tell my friends, is that by gardening with native plants, you can have an immediate positive effect on the environment. For instance, at BRS in the school garden, the third graders last year planted some milkweed, and over the summer, some monarch caterpillars had already appeared. So, this garden, you know, as I'm alluding to, will have an ecological dimension to it. We will strive to make it as beautiful as possible with seasonal interest throughout the year. It'll be a dynamic garden that will be different from one season to the next. And finally, the intention is for it to have an educational component as well. We've discussed possibly including some plaques that highlight some of the garden's important features and functions. So if anybody who hears about this is interested in being a part of the process or would like to get some hands-on experience, once the garden is planted, you can reach out to me.
Thank you for that. Also wanted to mention that in work session prior to our televised meeting, we met with a couple of different groups. Started out with a meeting of our Pleasantville Recycling Committee, a tremendously effective and active group, now linked off our main page. Is that true, Patty?
Yes.
Pleasantville-NY.gov. You can link right into the Pleasantville Recycles website, which is a wealth of information. They have come back to us and revisited a proposal that we talked at some length about a couple of years ago about a renewable bag initiative, the idea of establishing guidelines that would reduce or eliminate the use of plastic bags, reduce the use of paper bags, and increase the use of reusable bags. So, they've given us some draft legislation, which is modeled after legislation that was passed a year or so ago in our neighbors to the north in Newcastle, and that will be a subject that we'll be talking about in the very near future. When recycling left, we agreed that we'd convene a work session here in this room and invite the community members who are interested on this, pro and con, to come in and offer their comments about it. So, the Renewable Bag Initiative is on our radar screen. And then, we also met with Kathy Tinkle from the Beautification Committee and Helen Muir from Conservation Advisory Council regarding our tree inventory in general. In Kathy's particular case, she brought a bunch of photographs of our existing street trees in the downtown, and I think it's clear from that discussion that we've got some work to do in order to create a richer, more vibrant, healthier, and more eco-resilient, is that an appropriate way?
Sure.
Tree inventory. So, also on our radar screen, and anybody who has opinions on that subject, who would like to help, conceivably interested in tagging and marking trees so that we actually get a better handle on what we have, all takers, all comers are welcome. So, any other comments, announcements?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public at the moment? Nothing at the moment. Is there a motion to open a public hearing amending Chapter 173 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 172-60, Schedule 12, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Guyan Street?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the public hearing. So Patty, you want to give us the quick overview of what we're talking about here?
There's an area off of, I guess it's Grandview Drive, that has a spur of Guyan Street that is very narrow. I think the paved section is less than 18 feet wide. Currently, the parking situation has allowed parking to be on both sides of that street. I think the only setback had been about 15 feet from the intersections with Grandview and then with Academy Street. So, we've noticed over the past several months that there's been parking on both sides of those streets, causing a significant bottleneck to the point where not one vehicle can come pass through, depending on, you know, where these people are actually parking their cars. So in order to enable emergency vehicles to travel up and down that street without being encumbered by parked cars, we need to eliminate parking on one side. So what we're doing here is we're proposing to eliminate parking on the northern side of that street from Grandview to Academy. It will, in practical reality, affect maybe four parking spaces that were available in that short stretch of roadway.
Okay. Any questions?
And the neighbors are familiar with it? They actually occurred to.
And in fact, wanted, yes, correct. I mean, that area is heavily affected by BRS parking. That's what we're trying to grapple with here, right?
I think that's, you know, the concern during the week, but at any time.
Right.
You know, there's concern, because we just don't have a road that's wide enough to handle parking on both sides as well as two-way traffic.
So this is just from where Guyan intersects at the top of Academy?
Yes.
Across to Grandview?
Correct.
And that's, you said it's been congested enough there where the road is essentially closed?
Yeah, we posted it about a month ago on a temporary basis with no parking by order of the Pleasantville Police Department, and it's been, you know, effective, so we really need to make it permanent.
Does it, does the problem exist? I mean, are we going to end up revisiting this because they just shift down to the western side around the corner there? I was looking at the map.
No, there are regulations.
By the nursery school?
There are regulations already on that side of Academy.
Okay.
I mean, the problem on Academy is there do see people parking in driveways.
Yeah.
You know, there are things that are just being done notoriously.
We have, right there.
In other areas around the village, but, you know, we can only do, you know, we'll take this incrementally.
Is it on both sides of Academy? That spur of Academy already?
Parking?
Yeah.
It's not permitted on both sides, I'm just wondering.
Just one.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Comments from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We're out of the public hearing into the resolutions. Guess what? Go for it, Nicole.
Okay. I've got it. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves amending Chapter, this is our first one, right?
Yes.
173 Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 172-60, Schedule 7, Parking Prohibited at All Times as follows. So as we've just discussed, on the north side of Guyan Street, from the dead end to a point 40 feet east of the intersection of Academy Street, so this is what's being eliminated, on Guyan Street North from a point of 30 feet west to the intersection of Grandview Avenue, and adding on Guyan Street on the north side, the entire length from the intersection of Grandview Drive to Academy Street. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Having just gone through that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 176 Steve.
Hold on, just click down, there we go. Resolved that the pre-check register dated October 23, 2017 is hereby approved as listed below, from the general fund, the special purpose fund, the water fund, the capital fund, the refuse fund, and the trust fund for a total of $495,538.64.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 177 Colleen.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to advertise the bid for a 12-inch transmission water main project along Broadway between Church and Lake Streets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe what we're doing? This is our alternate source?
Yeah, this would be a significant project and a significant undertaking that will result in an improvement in water distribution throughout the village. It will create a second, a secondary means of distributing water from our water tanks into the distribution system here. Right now, we have one primary main that does carry the water from the water tanks into our distribution system, and that is vulnerable, you know, to lots of problems with respect to catastrophic breaks and other types of things that could occur. We actually had an issue several years ago when we had that break on Marble Avenue.
Right.
So in order to have redundancy in the system and have another way to backfeed our distribution system, we want to include this, we want to develop this new water main along Broadway, and we've gotten all of the approvals to do so from the agencies involved, which are DEC, DOT, and Department of Health. So we're ready to go out to bid. We're hoping that we can get this project done, started in the spring of 2018, and finished by the fall.
This is the closing of the loop that Jeff has talked about in the past, right? Which taps out along Broadway and connects the upper feeder line?
Yes, there won't be any surface connections on this.
Right.
This is a transmission main.
Right.
But it's necessary, and it's the shortest way, you know, to connect, you know, the system and to create that loop. However, since it involves a state highway, it also involves going over the aqueduct. I think people were reluctant to take it on years ago, but we need to do this, and we're...
So everybody remembers this, the water main break down on Marble Avenue back then, it was three or four years ago.
No.
Is it longer now?
Less.
Yeah, it's not that long.
Front of Pankels, it was last year.
Yeah, so when the chasm opened up in front of Pankles, the, if you, if everyone remembers, virtually everybody uphill from the flatter part of the village lost water pressure.
Right.
And some parts of the town had water pressure, everything was fine, and other parts up like on, near Michaels and up on that side of the hill were totally dry, and this is the reason. So, because of the way the water system's fed, the water main break drained out our ability to replenish our tank. This would allow the village to retain that water pressure in the case of a catastrophic break like that along one of our lines, just for context.
Okay.
Okay. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, Joe.
Resolved, yeah, number 178, right? Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby suspends parking meter fees for the time allowed on one, two, and three-hour meters from November 24, 2017, through December 26, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have an annual request that comes to us from the Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
In order to create a more shopping-friendly environment during the holiday season. Important for folks to realize, as we say every year, that time limits still prevail, although the parking is free. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 179 Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Director of Senior Services, hereby approves the appointment of Barbara Wilmore as a part-time recreation attendant at the Clinton Street Senior Center at a salary of $12 per hour. Said appointment is not to exceed 17 and 1/2 hours per week.
Is there a second?
Second.
New employee, part of the existing budget?
Yes, replacing.
Right.
An employee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, Steve.
180.
Yes.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby appoints Andrew Zugner to the position of motor vehicle operator effective November 1, 2017, at a salary of $59,431. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's backed up by the recommendation of a memo from Jeff E. Conam, our superintendent, filling an empty slot.
Yeah, from David McGee, who retired, I'm sorry, who resigned earlier this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to our new motor equipment operator, Andrew Zugner. Here we go, 181. Colleen.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Village Treasurer, hereby appoints Robin Rizzo to the position of Deputy Treasurer effective January 1, 2018, and further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to sign the management confidential agreement between the Village of Pleasantville and Robin Rizzo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Robin is in attendance tonight. We are delighted to welcome you.
Welcome.
Perhaps we should vote first, and then we'll welcome you.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can officially welcome you, so.
Welcome aboard.
We're making some rearrangements on the third floor, and Norrie Rigan, our longstanding Deputy Treasurer, is moving into an administrative post, and pleased to welcome Robin to the Pleasantville team.
Thank you.
All right, 182, Joe.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to Part 617.20 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act hereby declares their intent to be lead agency with respect to the Manville Road Corridor Improvement Project, and further authorizes the Village Clerk to circulate the notice of intent and the environmental assessment form to all involved agencies.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a required step as far as the process we go through to begin the project I referred to earlier, which is the Manville Road Corridor Project and the streetscape improvement and park and plaza down at Memorial Plaza, funded in large part by a state grant? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 183.
Whereas the Village, it's me, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Whereas the Village of Pleasantville awarded the bid for janitorial services to Divine Cleaning Services, 2253 Cincinnatus Avenue Bronx, on July 10, 2017, and whereas Divine Cleaning Services failed to comply with the specifications detailed in the janitorial services bid, and whereas Divine Cleaning Services was notified in writing on many occasions of their failure to comply with the specifications as detailed in the janitorial services bid, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the notification from Divine Cleaning Services of their termination of their contract with the Village of Pleasantville as detailed in their email dated October 11, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it's self-explanatory. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 184 Colleen. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Following that one, that resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to advertise to bid for janitorial services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tandem. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, now Colleen 181.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on October 9, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Just an opportunity to congratulate again Officer Thomas Woods, now Sergeant Thomas Woods, promoted and received his sergeant's pin at that meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Demstain.
Right, when I wasn't here.
Right. Okay, motion approved.
Good morning.
And while we're at it, I realize I failed in the announcements, since I just noticed it in a minute, to remind everybody about the Ragamuffin Parade, which is coming up this weekend on Saturday, the 28th. It's the annual Tina Gambino Run Walk for the Gambino, Tina Gambino Foundation, taking place in the morning, and then the Ragamuffin Parade with a cast of ghosts and goblins and Harry Potters gathering at BRS at about 10:30, launching into our annual legendary parade down Memorial, down to Memorial Plaza. So that's 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. Sorry for that failure to make that critical announcement upfront. 186, Joe.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments: appropriate fund balance, general fund, $35,000, transfer to capital for civic space projects; $100,000 transferred to capital for Manville Road improvements, Village funds; $75,000 transferred to capital for Capital Sidewalk Project for a total of $210,000 on that group; an increased revenue expense, capital fund, $35,000 inter-fund transfer from general fund for civic space projects; $100,000 inter-fund transfer from general fund for the Marble Road Improvement Village Funds; $75,000 inter-fund transfer from Capital Sidewalk Project, and $1,120 sidewalk program to Capital Sidewalk Project for a total of $211,120.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shouldn't that $100,000 in the increase be Manville Road Improvements, not Marble Road?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mary. The second set of, right.
Right. All right.
That's, that's to cover the engineering and some of the preliminary costs with Hodgson and...
And that, some of those pieces come out of, on our dime, right?
This part is all on us.
1.52 million, or thereabouts, from the state, and a $750,000 match from the village.
Correct.
Is that part of our $750,000?
It's about right.
We don't know that yet. We're assuming it would be.
Okay.
It depends on the total project cost.
Only because we're not, we're not totally into it, right?
Right.
Yeah, plus there's a whole elaborate mechanism by which one assesses what charges are acceptable under the grant, which is actually federal money administered through the state, so.
We'll only be using the grant for construction and construction administration, which is 90% of the project anyway, so.
Right, but other costs like these have to come out of our pocket.
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 187 Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby creates a Climate Smart Community Pledge Task Force to comprise of a maximum of nine people representing various stakeholder groups affiliated with the Village of Pleasantville, and be it further resolved that Andrew Welsh of Pace University be appointed as the Climate Smart Coordinator to assist the Village in achieving program goals.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the folks from Pace visited us several weeks ago and renewed a presentation they had made to us back in the spring about becoming a climate smart community. We have accepted that, very much appreciate Andrew and the folks over at Pace for the great support they're providing, and already have, am I right, a bunch of people who have signed up to be part of this committee, so.
Well, we'll put the word out, Nicole's done a great job on Facebook to get people interested, and we've got people raising their hands, so we're very excited for that.
No surprise in Pleasantville, New York, that people are willing to help, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. That is the end of our regular resolutions. Did anyone else have any new business? All right, is there a motion to go into executive session on matters of litigation and matters of personnel?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening. See you at the Ragamuffin Parade this Saturday, and mark your calendars for the joint meeting with the Pleasantville School District on November 13 at 7:30 in this room, and also our first community workshop on our streetscape improvements, again in this room on November 6 at 7:00 p.m.
I just want to wish my mother a happy 80th birthday, and I'm going to try and get back to the party as soon as I possibly can.
That's exciting. Happy birthday. That's fantastic.
All right, thank you, good night, see you soon.